Mr. President, my name is Tom Kendall and I'm Chairman of the Finance Committee. Today is December the 8th, 2014, and it's 5:30 in the afternoon. To my immediate left is John Swizer, member of committee. To his left then is Doug Friendly, also a member of committee. We are here today as the issue regarding the amount of funding of the Troy Channel 5 has some questions from some of the council members. So this meeting will be in order to respond to those questions and issues that they may have. Immediately following them will be a special meeting of council. At that time, the non-council members, citizens, will have the opportunity to ask questions or speak at that time. So I think we are going to start off this meeting with a presentation, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Tillery. Tim, on that?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. It's not really a presentation, it's just some background, just kind of a recap for everybody's education. I know when we talked about it at the budget meeting, when the Finance Committee recommended the budget, we didn't get into nearly as much detail as what the new members that were being talking to, kind of recap where we came from and where we are today and why. It really started in 2014, and for the past two years since that time, starting in 2012 with the budget process for 2013, we did say that, you know, this was coming from staff, coming from council, that there were some issues with the tapings that were happening, some reliability issues, some quality issues with meetings being taped. Their operations were expensive, yet their outside sources of funding were not picking up as much anyway as it seemed like the other agencies. In 2013, I believe, we were in our third year of a planned 5% per year reduction in not only their budget support, but also the WACC and Troy Main Street. And we sent the direction that they needed to explore ways to become more self-sufficient, look at regionalizing, merging, trying to come up with some kind of a regional organization. And then in the 2013, as I mentioned, we were in the middle of our support cutting because of the economy and because of the desire to see all of those agencies become more self-sufficient. They saw a 6 percent, or 6 and 1/4 percent decrease, actually $6,000 decrease over the previous year. 2014 budget came, we got a request for an equal amount, and there was no movement, nothing to report on any merger discussions whatsoever. And so what the council at that time approved was a six-month allocation of $50,000 with direction that in the next, in that six-month period, the first two quarters of the year, you know, really want you to work diligently on finding other ways, including merging and the whole thing. And then come back to the council if you had a plan, if that plan involved more funding, and present it to council to see if, in fact, you wanted to look at a reallocation. That report never came, that discussion with council never came. As a matter of fact, the mayor and I had numerous communications back and forth, asking, you know, where are you at, what's going on, how about a report, an update? And finally, on August 12th, mayor and I did meet with the board of Channel 5 at the school board office with superintendent and the treasurer. At that meeting, Channel 5 reported they had not had any progress, did not recommend merging with Pickwa or anyone else. That as of August, they were still looking at a status quo type operation. They did admit to having limited staff, you know, during the last two years, they've had some staff turnover and some changes, some of you may be aware of those more than others. They did admit, though, that staff, resources, technology, funding, as well as energy is a board to continue to try to be everything that everybody was becoming more and more of a challenge. And they asked us what kind of continued interest and where we saw the organization moving forward. The schools indicated that, you know, they maintain their own resources, their technology in many ways is newer, more modern, they do have a program or some form of curriculum that they run out of the schools, and that they could do their own thing with their own resources. We, of course, continued with the same message that we did in 2013 and '14 with, you know, we cannot continue status quo, we need to look at other options for ourselves, given that we have our own needs for technology and the like. So we left that meeting, we were beginning our 2015 budget process, started going through that in the middle of the process, we did receive a request for $50,000 from Channel 5. It was a bit of a surprise after that meeting, but nonetheless, we did receive it. We, as you know, recommended only $12,500, which represented a fourth of the $50,000 downloads to be considered a first quarter payment while we looked at converting and transitioning to our own internal capital investment and camera system in City Hall, which I will explain momentarily. Also, as you know, the Finance Committee recommended that unanimously as a part of the 2015 budget process as well, budget recommendation to the full council, as well as the resolution to make the allocation of $12,500. In the analysis that we used, the thinking that we had in making the recommendation was that, number one, they lack the resources and the technology. Much of the equipment is 2001 technology, they have slowly received grants to incrementally upgrade certain aspects, but there are still issues with the camera equipment and the other technological equipment, because I don't pretend to know all the names. The TV channel itself, Channel 5, is no longer available to those who subscribe to Time Warner basic cable. You have to have a digital box to be able to access the channel, either DVR or some kind of a digital rental, a Fox rental, et cetera. It's not available on Dish, it's not available on DirecTV, it's only available on one of the upper tiers of Time Warner. Programming is limited. You received today a packet of information, I hope everyone got it, by email, listing out some of the programming that Troy Public Broadcasting provides, just to go down that list and explain, or comment on a few of them. They do have a joint venture with Troy Community Radio, which is, I believe, a positive partnership for them. They mentioned doing live broadcasts at the Strawberry Festival Parade. There is no parade, there's been a plan for next year as well. They do weekly highlight programming for the Chamber of Commerce, Troy Main Street, Miami County Parks District, Lincoln Community Center, Troy Hainer Cultural Center, all or most of whom we provide separate allocations to, and with the value and the benefit that they may derive from that programming, that may be one of those partnerships that they want to expand financially rather than rely on us, if they are not in fact doing that now. The joint venture with the Troy City Schools, I mentioned the August 12th meeting. They also had a meeting last week with the schools, I did have an opportunity to talk to the superintendent to kind of talk about where they're going, and from my conversation with Mr. Herman, the school's thinking is the same as it was in August of this past They do, they are providing live streaming, that is something that is brand new. I think we were all surprised Monday night when that announcement was made, not only that it was a service that was being provided, but also that council wasn't consulted because, in my mind, I think that's probably something that council would want to consider as a policy matter as to whether or not you want them livestreamed. I suppose anybody is a part of the, a member of the public, we don't have any prohibition against televising, but certainly being a supporting agency, or supporting entity of the agency, it did come as a surprise that livestreaming was introduced without any advance notice. You know, they, we also then subsequently got a copy of a website link to a YouTube video, that was a taping of a meeting, that is something that is as long ago as, I can't remember the exact date, but it was around 12 to 18 months ago, we had asked to start doing, it happened for a month or two, but then again, with staff turnover and some of the staff resource issues, that's been very inconsistent, I don't believe that we've received one. One on the website today, it's not very easy to find the links to YouTube unless you go to YouTube and do a search of the old, or the archives and copies of our meetings. So that's a concern. If council policy is to introduce livestream, I think that that's a discussion that you need to have before you make the decision. It's something that we could do as a trial to see how it works, it is something that once you commit, you don't have to commit forever, and so that is something that we can talk about and we can do relatively inexpensively compared to the $50,000 annual request. So against that backdrop, or I guess some of the other things that we have concerns with, the programming, you saw the list of programming, it is not programming that makes up 168 hours, in other words, 24 hours 70 days a week, we would not, of course, do that, or council meetings don't go nearly that long. So we would like to see some things changed, and our recommended alternative, as we stated in the budget request for 2015, was that council provide a $12,500 transition amount for the first quarter while we install our cameras in this chamber. That would focus, there would be a multiple camera system, and these are details yet to be worked out, but I can, Mr. Kendall, without flashing in your eyes, just to show you what, the kind of thing that we would be talking about, these are cameras that would be dropped down from the ceiling, you'd have one here, and then you'd have one here and here, or somewhere on either side, either wall, depending on how much you zoom in and zoom out. A three-camera system, that camera would do something that we've really never had, and that is focus on who is speaking at the podium. That camera can also be programmed, that can be preset, so that we as amateur camera people would not be making people nauseous and dizzy by trying to zoom and pan and move and not know what we're doing. So these would be preset so that it could either, so that camera could do things like focus on the podium, or do a wider view, there's a different preset of wider view in the audience if you wanted to, and then each one of these corners could be preset to focus on one side of the dais or the other, and then have an additional preset where it focuses on the three committee members, and all it is is the touch of a button at the control panel, small control panel, and you can focus probably as much as you really want to focus because with the resolution, I don't think I want them focusing too closely on me, I won't speak for any of you. Again, we can include livestreaming. As a matter of fact, there is an app, this is what we would be able to use, and that livestreaming would be able to, without any kind of commercial advertising, would be live, running simultaneously on our website, as well as on Facebook, as well as through the app that I mentioned, this is the app that you, that somebody could download. We would record the council meetings through the camera system, make it immediately available on the web through our YouTube channel, make it available on the web, Facebook, and Twitter the following day. We could also allow, or provide a link to the library, as well as a hard copy of the library wanted one, I'm not sure, we did not follow up with the library to see what they have, if they are current in their archive or not, but we certainly could make that available at very, very quick timing. It is something that is a simple enough system that really any of our staff can operate it, will not require any overtime to do it, for somebody to be here to actually, to run the system. That recommendation was a one-time $25,000 amount to get the system up and running. There is about a $200 a month subscription fee for livestream, it's real time, and so there's no delays, and not saying that we should, it would, and it would not be appropriate for us to edit those kind of things, that's not why I'm saying that livestream may or may not be a good thing, it's just something that you really, as a council, should talk, discuss, that that's the direction we want to go. And in the meantime, you know, we spend $25,000, we have the most current technology, we're providing as much transparency as we possibly can, I'm not sure what else we can do as far as being transparent to people, and we concentrate our revenues, revenues that are basically flattening out, those being the franchise fees, or what is formerly known as the franchise fees, they are now video service provider fees, they're all regulated by the state of Ohio. We do not have a franchise agreement, that expired in 2010, so all of our laws and dictates are under the ORC, Chapter 13, 1352, I believe, is the code section. I passed around a very draft 10-year technology capital plan. This is, I guess, a sneak preview of the kind of thing that we will provide next year in anticipation of the 2016 budget with our entire city capital program when we update it, but given the fact that there was continued interest in this, and some inquiry as to why we are recommending what we're recommending, these are the kind of resources, as well as, more importantly, the expenses that we as a city in the technology realm look to face in the next five to 10 years. Without getting into too much detail, I'll just let you look at that at your leisure, and I do have some extra copies up here, maybe anybody else, we can make some more copies as well. Again, this is very draft, it's subject to change, it is just a quick list of the kind of things that we fund now, as well as those that we know we are going to be facing in the next few years. Question was asked, what do we do with those franchise fees now? You might recall that in, I believe it was 2008 or 2009, the franchise, in anticipation of the new state law going into effect. Prior to that law going into effect, we had a 3% franchise rate, charge fee, and we were allowed to go to 5%, but had to do that prior to the effective date of the ORC code change. We did that, but when we did that, the council approved that with the understanding, or I'm in condition that the additional 2% would go into Fund 447. So since that time, we had a separate technology fund, 447, that is specifically earmarked for technology needs. In addition to that, I do have that reflected in this draft at the top, as well as the franchise fee line item that is accounted for separately as a revenue line item in Fund 101, the general fund. In reviewing our old franchise agreement, as well as the new state law, there's never been, nor is there now, any tie between a franchise fee and a form of public access. The franchise fee was originally collected as compensation by the cable companies when they wanted to run line in the wider way, so it is a fee for the use of that wider Our recommendation was based on the fact that we know that we have our own needs, that as you see, we do have quite a few priorities, and we can do what we need to do as far as televising our meetings in-house at a far more cost-effective, in a far more cost-effective method than continuing to pay for contribution to Channel 5, which again is limited by their overall funding, their sponsorships, their resources, their technology, et cetera. I think that is it. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Mr. Sato?
I've got a specific question at this time.
Open it up to council. This is Oda, I'll give you first option, as you requested, but we can, we can listen
Is there any possibility of, if we do not continue funding? I'm not convinced about spending the money ourselves, but what if, if we discontinue the current contract that we have with them, can we pay them to, you know, is there a service fee that you would just say, hey, you know, it would cost this much to have you come and, or if they set up a fee, I don't know, do they charge a fee now for the committee, for any different?
No, they don't well know because we haven't provided them an annual allocation on that asset.
So I guess that's a question, if we do not allocate money, instead of spending the money to differentiate equipment, can we contract with them to film?
Well, we could do that, but that defies the logic of our recommendation, and that is that we spent probably less than $25,000 one time. The only recurring fee that we have would be $2,000, $2,400 if you want to do your livestreaming for 12 months. That's the only recurring fee that we would have, as opposed to, you know, over the last 10 years or 15 years, I'm not sure, you know, we've paid a couple of, down here, okay, since 1990, we've spent over $2.1 million on allocations to public access Channel 5.
I'm just interested in the meaning.
You know, we're, we're, once we buy the cameras, you know, every four or five years we may have to upgrade the cameras themselves, but our only ongoing expense then is if you want to livestream. If you want to just do tape delay or record and post after the fact, then you wouldn't even have the recurring fee.
What was the $200 a month?
That's just, that's for the livestreaming, and the reason that it's $200 is that it allows you, I can't, it allows you to simultaneously post and do livestreaming on Facebook and the website, and through the app, all at the same time. So that gives us multiple venues, real time, live, as it happens.
I guess it'd be interesting to find out if we discontinued the allocation, what would it cost us to pay them? And that's not a great idea.
And it's not, and it's really not something that, I mean, that's something that we had hoped over the last two years could have been an option that they came back to us with.
Understood.
And we just never got anywhere with it. We had high hopes that, you know, perhaps partnering with Pickwa, because Pickwa has different original programming that maybe both organizations could complement each other, and between the two of them, have enough original programming, have enough synergy, share the technology, because I believe Pickwa's technologies might just be a little, in some ways, better, you know, and share some staff, and just do some things more efficiently, and none of that came back to us.
What is the franchise fee revenues? Do those come to the city?
They come to the city, yes. Those are payments to us.
From?
From Time Warner.
That they currently pay?
Actually, the subscribers to Time Warner pay it, it's online, I don't know.
That's all I have to add.
Any other questions?
No, please, you first.
Well, I'm here. Just a couple of observations. Number one, we're looking at senior staff in administering the cameras if we were to purchase our equipment, is that correct?
Senior staff, you know, I do want to remind everybody that, yeah, two years ago now, I believe, is when you added to our MIS staff, MIS technician. Part of the reason was to broaden our communications beyond just our printed newsletter, to get into the social media, to really enhance our transparency. We don't anticipate, and that person's salary as well, so that's not an overtime issue, but yeah, senior, middle staff, and like I said, it's a very simple control function preset, so they won't be, you know, trying to zoom in and zoom out.
No, I understand that, but quite honestly, I kind of look at it from my standpoint that these are senior folks that are being asked to do, and this is not a denigration, but a very menial task, and I think that that is something that particularly we may have to pay for and should be paying for. I'm not too happy, quite honestly, with Channel 5 in not keeping us council, and I'll just speak to myself, in the loop, in a lot of the conversations, and off of your comments, Mr. Tillery, I think, Tillery, information coming very late to you, that very little has come to me except at last minute. I am a proponent, quite honestly, of Channel 5, of public access television, from the standpoint of a lot of history that I have in that meeting. in that media with my former job. However, with some things that we're talking about here, we haven't made any inroads in the last year, year and a half, with the time that has been given, particularly in Channel 5, to make some of the improvements. So I've kind of, I'm wobbly both ways on this, but I would like to see something worked out to benefit the community because of the funding that we do give them, with some of the other things that benefit the community outside of City Hall. And I think that some funding needs to be going there. I'm open to discussing that, but those are my thoughts.
Mr. Chair, if I can respond to a couple of things. First of all, the issue of staff operating it. I would not consider it a menial. Just like I wouldn't be a paramedic, I wouldn't be a camera person, because I'd really, really screw it up. I know that, and so, you know, I don't know that it's just taking a hole for planning something. It's just not that, I wouldn't call it menial. Nor do I think that it's beneath the staff to be doing that. The simple fact is that it would be very difficult to mess it up as long as you follow the simple instructions. Press button one if you want to do podium, if you want to focus on the podium, you know, press number two if you want to focus on the middle of the podium, you know, the dais. So it's really not that difficult. We are already paying staff to know that stuff. So any additional payments based on that logic would be redundant payments, and it goes back to cost effectiveness and other matters that we have. I mentioned before, based on the list that we got from Channel 5, some of the other community events that they're taping, some of which aren't happening anymore, but others that frankly are benefiting specific organizations, most of which we already pay a stipend to, either through membership fees with the Chamber, or Troy Main Street gets an allocation, or the County Department District who has a separate levy that we all support as property owners. And so, you know, that was part of our push two years ago for them to partner up more with other sources. And, you know, I was concerned Wednesday, for example, as was my wife, but for different reasons, at dinnertime on Wednesday night, about 6:15, sitting at the dinner table, instead of talking about our day, I turned on Channel 5, because I do have the DVR, and I got the digital channel. And at that point, it was, all they were doing was rotating ads, and there was no programming going on. And my wife wasn't happy, because that's family time, but work is work, and she needs to, and you've got to do it. So, you know, I'm concerned about the level of programming, the type of programming, and the inability to really pinpoint with any kind of accuracy who the message is getting to. Now, that may become a little easier when you see on the internet the hits from Facebook and some of the social media, it's the same thing that we can do. But with the way the Time Warner cable lineup and channelization is now, I really wonder who is getting, who is receiving the message. And so if we can spend money one time and then focus on our technology priorities to match the source and use of those franchise fees, the little bit of money, then that's why we made the recommendation to do that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, first of course.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Phillips. I am a believer in public television, think it does have a role in our, in our community and in our society. I think it does serve a group that, you know, wouldn't be served by anything else. I do have a couple of questions, and I do agree with what Mr. Titterton has said. Also, you know, my concern is, is, you know, how much, we always believe in economic development, and we use that as our message, and I believe in that also. I guess my concern is, what part of economic development, what part do they play? They focus on, you know, Strawberry Festival, and they focused on Vice-Lenten deal, and Hayner, and they did a good job with that. I like watching that. I just wonder how much influence that has to other people looking at Troy. You know, and it's probably very difficult to gauge, but, you know, I think we're reaching out to, you know, on the worldwide web to promote Troy, showcase Troy. I wonder how many hits they get on that website, really. Also, I guess, you know, years ago, when I first came by council, we talked about television broadcasting, City Council. We got to the point of saying, well, who's going to want the equipment? And came down to volunteers, tried volunteers, and it didn't work. And I wonder how much, you know, the MIS department, would have enough time to do that, to actually focus on everything that needs done. So I guess that's another question. And third, I wonder, I know they focus on, there's a requirement for the emergency broadcast system. If there was an emergency in our community, how would our citizens be alerted to that, aside from, you know, regular channel?
Yeah, they're TV 5. I don't believe TV 5 plays that much of a role, if any, in the emergency broadcast system. Those are the regional stations. I don't pretend to be an expert on that, but there are several other methods that, where that does in fact happen. I know that if they are part of the broadcast system, they are going to be reaching a very, very small part of the community, again, because they're not on the basic Time Warner. Time Warner only makes a percentage of total viewership, subscription offerings between rabiders, digital boxes, without any kind of cable, satellite, et cetera. So that, I don't know, is an issue at all. Related to the time factor, the MIS department, again, two years ago, you did add a second MIS person, a technician. Half, 50% of his time is and continues to be and will continue to be communication, social media, communication, transparency, getting word out and getting the message across to people on what we're doing and how we're doing it. So the time is not a factor, not an issue here. Related to economic development, certainly, those that do view, might look at it as a quality of life enhancement, which of course, needs and helps our economic development program. However, between limited viewership, as well as the dated technology, some of the programming that I've seen, you know, the audio is not as clear and crisp as it's been. And I will say that, you know, they're trying to get better with what they have and the grants that they're getting. But I'm just talking about complaints that occurred in the past, that the audio has suffered, and there's not as much programming out there as you might think.
I appreciate you bringing up the franchise fees, because I've had people ask me about that, so thank you for clarifying that. And I guess, you know, my other question is, I guess I'm looking at the technology budget, and it looks like we're going to the deficit, you know, a deficit balance. So, you know, I guess that's concerning a matter of what.
Well, it is, and, you know, when we look at some of these big-ticket items, we're not limited to the franchise fee. It is, most of the franchise fee, 60% of the franchise fees, are part of the General Fund revenues. This is just meant to say, okay, here's the needs, and we tried to spread them out as much as we could, that we know are coming up. It does not mean that we have to do them, does not mean that we'll be able to do them, does not mean that we will do them on the schedule as they are presented to you tonight. That's why it's stamped draft at the top. It's just to give you a snapshot of the types of things that are out there. We will drill down on these next year as part of our capital investment program project.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? All right, Swizer still move forward?
Still move forward. I hear the same, move forward.
The district members still move forward to be councilable with the recommendations that he reported with this amount of allocation. Anything else to be for quieting? Okay, these are adjourned, thank you.
Good evening, and welcome to the special meeting of Troy City Council. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mrs. Oden?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Swizer?
Here.
Mrs. Snead?
Here.
Mr. Tremble?
Here.
All members of council are present.
Mrs. Knight, please read the notice of this special meeting.
Notice of special meeting of the City Council to Mr. Clark, Mr. Heath, Mr. Kendall, Mrs. Oden, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Swizer, Mrs. Snead, Mr. Tremble, Mr. Twist. You are hereby notified that there will be a special meeting of the City Council in the city of Troy, Ohio, at the council chambers in said city on Monday, the 8th, December 2014, 6:00 p.m. or later, if the meeting in the Finance Committee's scheduled for 5:30 p.m. December 8, 2014, is not concluded by 6:00 p.m. For the purpose of considering R-59 2014, 2015 funding to PTCC, and O-36 2014, appropriation for 2015, this meeting is called by council members Thomas M. Kendall, John W. Swizer, and Douglas W. Tremble, pursuant to Rule 25 of Troy City Council Rules for Procedure, and will now hand this notice around to be signed by all members of council.
Okay, as they're signing, then, I think we can go ahead and with the Finance Committee report this evening. And Mr. Kendall, chair, we will have that.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met on December 8, 2014, to discuss the 2015 funding for Public Television Communications Center, known as PTCC. This funding has been recommended to be the amount of $12,500 to fund the first quarter of 2015. Thereafter, the city would take advantage of current technology to record council committee meetings, make those meetings available to be viewed on the city's website at the convenience of the viewer. During the meeting, the administration presented a draft capital plan of needed city technology improvements over the next 10 years. We recognize that PTCC provides a service to other areas of the community, as PTCC representatives noted at the December 1st meeting of council, and has been indicated in the information provided by PTCC representatives since that meeting. However, looking at the best way to provide access to the council committee meetings, we continue to support providing this service in-house. The $12,500 funding for the first quarter would provide a transition time to acquire and install equipment in council chambers. It would also provide some time for PTCC to look into other funding options to continue to provide services to other areas of the community. Therefore, it is the recommendation of this committee that the $12,500 funding to PTCC be approved. And this was agreed to, submitted by Mr. Swizer, Mr. Tremble, and myself, and the chair.
Are there any questions from council on the report? Okay. Are there anyone in the audience who wishes to have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this morning? This evening, I'm sorry. There is a two-minute time limit at this point of the meeting. So please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Dave Murray. My office is at 104 North Market Street, Troy, and I'm here as treasurer of Troy TV 5. I'm not going to be redundant and repeat anything that I spoke about at the last meeting, nor in my emails. I would just like to clarify a few things that came up in the meeting before this, this evening. First of all, live streaming, we are not sending this camera signal out live on the internet. Live streaming in the broadcast realm means what people can see on our TV station, they see live on the internet if they choose. We would not broadcast these meetings live unless we were requested to do so by you all. Regarding the merger with the Western Ohio TV Consortium, headquartered in Pickwa, we tried our best there. We viewed it, I think, as sharing of resources and equipment and cost-reduction possibilities according to the directives of the council and the staff of the city of Troy. They viewed it strictly as access to our revenue dollars. And particularly, when our funding was cut from $90,000 to $50,000, they were no longer rested in, no longer interested in sharing of any resources, equipment, personnel, anything like that. So at that point in time, that was our last, best option as far as merger, although we did talk to some other parties. And finally, Time Warner, yes, we're not on there unless you have the box. Neither is the Weather Channel, neither is the Golf Channel. Certainly, there are people interested in those. My belief is, Time Warner's going to pluck these off one at a time, or two or three at a time, so that eventually, no one will be able to see cable TV without paying extra for Time Warner's box. In which case, if they did, if TV 5 was still around, then we would be back in all these times. Regarding equipment, we do have new cameras, new light kits, and new editor. Granted, some of our programming's old. That's because we have not been able to do the full amount of programming as in years past, due strictly to budgetary reasons. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have any comments at this point? Move forward then with resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight, please, Resolution R-59 2014.
Resolution number R-59 2014, Resumption Allocating Funds for Public Television Communications Center for the year 2015. Funding $12,500, second reading.
Are there any questions from council on the resolution?
Move to the assistant. Go ahead.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Tremble to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Tremble?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
No.
There are three no-los, fails, for suspension.
I don't have my cheat sheet here. Third reading.
It was a three reading, failed suspension.
Mrs. Knight, please read the ordinance O-36 2014.
Ordinance number O-36 2014, Ordinance Appropriating Funds Necessary for the various departments and offices of the city of Troy, Ohio, for the year 2015. This is the approval of the budget, the appropriation ordinance. This must be in place prior to January 1, 2015, so that we can pay bills starting at that date. This is the second reading.
Are there any questions from council on this?
Madam President, I only have to comment. I think that, quite honestly, we need to have a balanced budget and not one with a deficit in any measure. So that is my complaint.
Any other comments?
Madam President.
Mr. Clark?
I wonder if we could take the Treasure Island piece out of this, and I don't think we'd have a problem passing the budget.
Thank you. I think that could be for further discussion. I don't see what the Finance Committee is recommending that at this time.
Is there a motion to amend the budget to pull that out?
Yes, there is.
Do you know how much that is?
One, one billion... One, one million, I don't have the figures right offhand. 1.8 million.
The point is, is that we have to, if, if that is to be amended, it has to be amended tonight, otherwise you cannot vote under amended ordinance next meeting, or until next meeting, you cannot vote amendment to legislation, same even as you may amend, assuming that it passes and it goes in.
Okay. Um, I will ask you to restate your motion then, just so we are all clear.
My, my motion would be to take the Treasure Island funding out of the budget.
In the amount of?
1.8 million.
Um, is there a second for that motion?
One second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Phillips to remove or amend the, amend the budget to remove $1.8 million that represents the Treasure Island funding, which would actually be amending this section of this capital improvement, so, because it's by time, so we would have to change that particular fund. Uh, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Can you just clarify this case in one word?
Yes. Yes, means you're voting for the motion which would amend the appropriation ordinance.
Yes means no Treasure Island, no means yes Treasure Island.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Excuse me.
Right. Yeah, if you vote yes for the amendment, that means no Treasure Island.
That's correct.
If you vote no for the amendment, that means Treasure Island stays in.
You're voting on whether to amend it.
Yes, Mr. Clark. Yes.
Madam Chair. Uh, I'm looking at the budget, the actual number is one day and 723,000.
Okay.
Plus the debt service amount.
Yeah, that's the only thing. There'd be some debt services associated with that, which we have in our business.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
No.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
No.
Mrs. Snead?
No.
Mr. Tremblay?
No.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
No.
Okay, motion failed, motion failed adoption, yes.
A move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swayzer to suspend the rules on ordinance O-36. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
No.
Mr. Clark?
No.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
The fail suspension.
Right, this will go to a third reading.
Yes.
Uh, that completes the business, unfortunately, to next meeting, um, meeting is earned.